All right, welcome to the Town and Mount Desert Planning Board Meeting for April 12th, 2023, and all right, Meredith is here. Just making introductions, welcome aboard, Meredith. You know, it's all good. So we've got, uh, let's see, board members present in the room tonight with Meredith Randolph, Tracy Loftus Keller, uh, myself Chair William Hanley, and we've got Dave Ashmore online. Uh, I don't see our alternate online or in the room, um, but hopefully Lori can join us as well. In Waters. And, um, so let's, let's get going here. So let's see, um, first item is the approval of minutes and forget the date of that. Thank you. That was March 8th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
Right. Uh, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randall, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. All right. Item three on the agenda tonight. We have a Maine Department of Transportation signage request for Anna and Adam Perkins doing business as Triple Check Farm at 1142 State Route 102 Bar Harbor, Maine 04609. And are Adam and Anna here tonight? Or online? Do we have Anna and Adam online with us tonight by any chance? All right. We've got a sign request and it's a
Main DOT signs.
The main DOT signs, I think we're all familiar with them. We have them in our package and, um, as usual, board reviews them and then we make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. Any questions from the board about the sign request?
So the best of my comprehension of this application, the sign is just going to say to Triple Check Farm or the arrow. And that's the extent of it. It's going to be a small blue sign with white lettering and a white border.
And can you describe where it will be placed?
Uh, in the same location, um, if you are on, what's that route? It's sound, the top of Sound Drive, uh,
Route 198?
198, uh, approaching, having just crossed, um, over the bridge. Uh, you're approaching the stop sign where if you made a right-hand turn, you'd come right to the, um, Freshy Store.
Do you mean 102?
I don't know what it's from.
It's here. This road is the common, the community schools here?
Yes.
And, uh, and then you cross and so that's 102.
102, okay.
And then
102 goes to Southwest Harbor and 198 comes from Northeast.
Hold on.
Where are we?
Is it labeled correctly?
Well, it even, oh, okay. So it says at the, this is confusing. It says at the intersection of 102 and Sound Drive, and that's why I assumed that that sign, I saw the 102, but that's actually saying this is 102. Do we ever pay attention to street numbers around here? How sound, so we're
So technically it's 198 coming up to the light and some still and it's on the right-hand side as you're approaching the light from heading west.
But this diagram shows Sound Drive.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't think the diagrams label them correctly.
But Sound Drive doesn't connect with 198.
I think they meant
Oh, they probably meant 198.
I think they meant 198.
Ah, okay.
Because as you, as you do go, you know, I've seen a reference both ways when you cross over the brick there.
Uh huh.
You know, and the addresses along there often reference some Sound Drive. Even though it's technically
No, it is Sound Drive, right. I was thinking Sound Drive, okay. That Sound Drive, okay, they've, they've got it.
They've got it right. They're just labeling it Sound Drive.
Okay. Yes.
Any questions from the public about the proposed DOT sign location? None heard. They've just got it labeled Sound Drive on the
It's just fine. We got confused.
We, we
It's not the bottom by the bridge.
Yeah.
That is Sound Drive.
It is.
I was thinking it was Sound Drive.
It's either Sound or Route 198.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
It's fine.
It's fine.
Momentary confusion, that's all.
All right, well then I guess we'll need a motion for recommendation to the Board of Selectmen.
Is that all we need to do?
Yes.
Yes.
I have an official there, municipal official that has to sign that application.
I make a motion to recommend the two, and we've got two signs.
And it's just one, could we have a lovely four, I believe? Because they couldn't have it on, they wanted one initially on State 102, Route 102, but because they have a business on Route 102, they're not allowed to have a DOT sign.
Okay.
Hmm.
Um, so the application shows it. Has that all been cleared up?
Yeah.
That's what we've been given. Hold on, is this, no, no?
Yeah, she's only asking for one. Yeah, she does show two, but she sent me anything about this. Like I said, because she's on Route 102, they can't have one.
Well, it should be part of the whole.
She's asking to have one on here.
Yeah, yeah. Everything that we have indicates there too.
Definitely, but there's only one, so you're only approving one.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve one sign on Sound Drive, headed up to 102.
So I
Oh, make the recommendation to the select, is that?
Yes.
Here's the much.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself Chair William Hanley, aye. There you go, roll them right through it. All right, item four on the agenda tonight, we have subdivision approval application. We have section 4.1 pre-application procedures for subdivisions. Tonight we have a sketch plan. And we have owner, bear with me, Noah Song du Soleil LLC, agent is Tom Benson, locations Aspen Way, Mount Desert, Tax Map 12, Lot 13-29-005. Zoning District is Shoreland Residential 5 and, uh, Rural Woodland 3. The purpose is to divide Lot 5 in the Solitaire subdivision. It's amendment number four. There was a site visit at 4:30 and was this one advertised?
It was, but it's the newspaper, yes. The Mount Sterling subdivision.
And were abotters?
No.
And why don't we have notify abotters?
You don't have to notify abotters or put it in the newspaper.
There you go, and
It was just a preliminary discussion.
Right.
Sketch plan.
It's a sketch plan review where we're just kind of generally discussing the proposed subdivision. And, uh, the subdivision process is technically a, a three-part process.
Yep.
Where we have sketch plan completeness and then the public hearing.
Correct.
Right, and is there any conflict of interest in this one?
Yeah, Bill.
Yes, I think there is with me as I am a member of the, um, uh, the Woods Road Association as I live off Woods Road, so I'm gonna ask the board to consider my recusal for this one and in doing so, we should probably vote our exceptional vice chair on if my recusal was accepted.
Do we need to vote on separate issues?
I think you need to vote the chair off.
Right, and then vote her on.
Yeah.
Cause I can chair. I make a motion that Bill is right to refuse himself.
I'll second that motion.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
And I'll make a motion to have Tracy step in as chair.
I can
Back to you. Dave, you got a second there?
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
All right.
I get to sit here some
Congratulations.
If you have to see from that seat. Well, we'll just slide down.
Yeah.
So, uh, to, to start this, I'd like to just read the very most, uh, first small paragraph of section four, 4.1, this is pre-application procedure. Prior to submitting an application for subdivision approval, the subdivider or his authorized agent shall appear at a regular meeting of the board for discuss the proposed subdivision. So that's the intent of, of this presentation this evening is just a discussion. Um, Meredith, you were, um, principal attending the site visit. Would you like to give a report on that?
Uh, sure, um, we met out by the cul-de-sac, uh, on Aspen Way. Um, Tom Benson, uh, escorted us to see that the flagged proposed new division line of Lot 5. Right now Lot 5 is one large 12 some acre lot, uh, and he showed us, uh, where it would be split so it would, and then the new lot would be Lot 7 because they already have a lot 6, so it's five turning into five and seven. Uh, and then we walked around to the other side of the cul-de-sac. Um, and looked at the condition of uh, the coat, the covert that was put in. Um, and walked around the cul-de-sac, I
Land.
Their flags dividing it. I don't know what else.
Okay.
All right, there were many people there.
Mm-hmm. Right, um, Tom, would you like to give a presentation?
I think Bill pretty well summed it up.
Uh, okay.
We're dividing Lot 5 into two lots, roughly a little over six acres apiece. And that's become Lot 5 and 7. The roads are complete, everything is powered and that's all free approved part of the process. This is just merely a split of one lot. I was wondering a question. Would this be under 5.13? Okay, I am. I know other times they focus on, when you come in for an amendment, we focus on a new amendment period.
It starts as 5.13 because it's a planned revision after approval. So this is a lot creating a new lot. But therefore, they bypassed the fact that it needs a public hearing because it needs a full review. But it's a brand new one.
Right.
But the first, and so the first process for review is sketch, then it creates a public hearing.
But you say no public hearing.
Well, because they already know it requires a public hearing, you're creating a new law. The only time that section 513 would come into play is if if you're changing the boundaries of a lot within a previously approved subdivision. Not creating a new law, which is create, change in the lot lines. Or if you're adding easements on lots that weren't in a previously approved subdivision. That would not require a public hearing because it's not creating a new law, it's not creating a dwelling, and it's not changing the law line outside the frontiers of the previously approved subdivision.
The roads are in, everything is free, the things are good. Except in this split and we have a soil test for Lot 7, both lots have soil test fixed. Wetlands were not have to be originally with the old subdivision, which is the number four. That pretty well sums it up then.
So Kim, it seems are we just, in the past, this meeting was mostly just determining that we do need, uh, the first meeting was just determining that we needed a public hearing. We don't go through and review the application.
Not written, not yet, no.
Right.
No, you determined in the past that when a new law is created in a previously approved subdivision, you said not to bother to do section 513 first because that's all kind of a waste of a meeting. Because you know a new law is being created, so it's gotta go through the process.
Mm-hmm.
That's why they're before you now is because 513 does create a new law. So it's gonna require a full review of you guys to make sure it meets all the zoning requirements. Setting lot size, wetland donation. That's why you need to go, this needs to come before you.
Right.
So you bypass that 513 and automatically it started in the process for a review of an amendment to a previously approved subdivision because it's creating a new law by dividing Lot 5.
Okay, I was, I guess, it's what, how much are we doing this evening?
Today is just a previous, like I said, it's just to discuss that they're gonna explain what they're doing. You're gonna look at your map, you did the site visit. They, um, pin the line or flag the line, so now that's what they're proposing. Your next phase will be a completeness where you go through the whole application.
Yes. So there's not a lot to discuss, we just that it does need to of public hearing, yeah.
So you have a site visit.
Mm-hmm.
That's part of 4.2. That's part of 4.2, point, um, 3. Where you can't go for pre-application, cannot be considered complete until such inspection has been made. Now you're doing the, now they're gonna file a formal application, which is your completeness review.
Okay, what's the next thing?
You have what? I consider the final plan and the final application.
Yeah, he submitted the whole packet, but I, as I put a memo in there that your step plan was just he got anxious. So you're back in.
I like to submit as complete as I can at each meeting. I know we're ahead of the game, but you have the final application. I know you can't act on it, but
No, that's correct.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking back to the last one we did. Um, where we determined that it wasn't because we didn't understand, that we didn't need a public hearing because we didn't understand.
Yeah.
Yes, and so, uh, thinking back to that meeting, that all that we discussed is whether it was needed to have a public hearing or not, that whole meeting. And we decided, uh, so decided that. And here's the plan.
Well, because he was showing it one law, that's why.
Yeah, no, we was so confused.
And I asked him, are you creating two laws? And he kept saying no, which he was. So this plan is
But I'm just, uh, just for reference of what this meeting is, and that, that was the meeting. And we didn't, we didn't get into anything we had to but we did, we discussed, yeah, yeah, and we discussed it enough to realize that we were, that was confusing.
Yeah, he had a lot of notes on things.
But this doesn't seem confusing, this seems very straightforward, the informations there.
I just wanted to confirm, and so, so 513 to um, does say if the revision involves a creation of a new subdivision law.
Right.
Then a public hearing is required.
Yeah, which they bypass. In previous meetings, they said, Kim, don't even bother having a sound, so do 513 if you know a new law is being created. So we bypass that.
Okay.
So you gotta go through the whole process, you're gonna have a public hearing, but it's gonna be at the end.
Sure, so it mentions, it, it stipulates the public hearing. Is that? But it doesn't mention completeness review, is that always a tack, is that, you know?
When you do a brand new law and then into a subdivision that creates a new law, you gotta go back for full process. Yes, full review.
That's good.
Is it appropriate to have public comment?
No, it's not, it's not a public thing.
Oh, it's not a public thing, okay.
There's sort of not enough to do.
I see. It's just that, like I said, it's just them coming, explaining what they're doing. And then you guys understand what's being done. If you have questions, don't understand the plan, make sure now is the time to ask them. But if you understand it, then the next process is completeness.
The roads in, they're just splitting a lot. Mm-hmm, clearly labeled.
Yeah. I don't have any questions.
You see anything that goes to question?
It's a subdivision we already proved, it's just the split of one lot. Not complicated, understand that you have to have a public hearing, but
I don't have any questions either.
Fantastic. Hey, so the next part is, is completely different. Okay, so this is the public will have to ask questions if they don't understand something about the sketch plan. Yep, if, well, if you have a question that you don't, yeah, that you don't understand what they're doing, yeah.
Yes, please do, yes.
On this
In your name?
I'm sorry, this is Vicki Edinburgh, and I'm Secretary of the Woods Road Association. I respect the site visitor and the other officers of Woods Road Association, Nikki Allen and Regina Root. That's going to side of them. Very. Um, amendment, the proposed amendment four, the Solitaire subdivision plan has added a new statement that wasn't on previous amendments. And I don't understand what it means. And I'd like to know, what it says is Solitaire Lot Owners number five and number seven fell there equally in the cost of reasonable and method bearing appearance to maintenance of the Solitaire subdivision room or roads below the plan unless made changed by agreement, Road Association, or other method paths allowed. That's a pretty confusing statement. Given that there's already a road maintenance plan in place and I don't know what it means.
Matt? I can speak to that, um, and we did submit a modification to that language. It came to our attention that it was being misinterpreted. Um, so we did submit a clarification of the language, which I think we'll refer to as the, it's the one new note to the plan, and so the plan is the same as the previously approved three amendments. We did add one note. Um, uh, and changed the wording that was just read slightly. Uh, and really what that, what that was doing was providing a level of understanding and protection for the lot owners, uh, regarding, uh, the future of road maintenance. And actually, that language was modeled after the recently adopted 2021 Maine state statute regarding maintenance of private roads that benefit residential properties. And it looks like the state in, in 21, um, provided a safety net for property owners on private roads. In the event, as obviously occur, has occurred historically and motivated them to introduce this statute. In the absence of, or during the dysfunction or dispute of a road maintenance agreement, the state has instituted this statute, which, which largely reads similar to the language we've included in the note. That, um, after reasonable and due process and notice, a lot owner shall be responsible for their one proportionate share of the collective cost of reasonable and necessary repairs to and maintenance of the subdivision road or roads shown on the plan unless otherwise maintained by agreement, road association, or other method as allowed. So nearly verbatim uh, to the state statute, which provides that protection for all lot owners throughout the state in the event, again, in the absence of or during the dispute of a road maintenance agreement. In, uh, August of, uh, 22, the road maintenance agreement was terminated. Uh, and therefore this language was put in place new on the plan to memorialize in, in a way the state statute and introduce and recognize the protections that the state has put in place uh, for the implement, you know, the, making sure that roads are maintained even in the absence of a road maintenance association. So we, we went, we voluntarily placed this note on the plan to provide protection and to identify that the lots, lots five and seven do understand will be codified by the condition of the plan that they do have to be responsible for their one proportionate share of the collective cost necessary repairs and maintenance of the subdivision road. So we're ensuring, even though it would already have been covered by state statute, all private road property owners are covered. Uh, we're making sure that that was identified on the plan so there was no misunderstanding. And we did, we did understand there was misinterpretation, so I believe we improved the language uh, to more accurately describe that the two lots will be just like all other lots responsible for their share of maintenance in the event of the absence of the dysfunction of a road, uh, maintenance agreement. So that's, that's why that was put there and that's the explanation for it. And really, we're taking the state's need on that as to the protections they'd like to see in place.
And they're each taking a share, the way that, the way that you just described it, at times it sounded like the Lot 5 had a share and now 5 and 7 are going to share that share.
Well, they, they would each, both lots 5 and 7 would each have their proportionate share. So for example, if there were 10 lots on the road, every lot would be one tenth, you know, liable for one tenth of the costs. Uh, so we've codified that, acknowledged that, understand the lots are responsible for maintenance. However, that happens to be occurring at any given time.
Excuse me, this is Anne Boucher, may I say something?
It's up to you, let's chair.
I think it would be okay for you to speak, ma'am.
I think that, uh, the gentleman who spoke said there was a lot of confusion about the road maintenance. And I think that's correct. There certainly has been confusion on the part of the people uh, on Woods Road and on Aspen Way. And I think the, uh, planning board has received a number of letters explaining the way we saw it and what we believe to be true. And I think those are very important issues to the, all of the individuals who purchase lots, uh, from Mr. Morehouse or who lived there previously, such as us or others who had land in that area. It also impacts all of the whole Woods Road Association and Woods Road uh, because of other issues such as the feeling of community. And I think those issues are extremely important. And I think those issues are extremely important and have already been addressed. And this new language further confuses it and certainly does not make for a better situation for those who live there. Thank you.
I guess I would say that the language reiterates the state statute, which all needs for every lot owner on a private road in the whole state.
And I think maybe that, would it clarify anything just to take out that you're specifying that statement to five and seven? That you're making a change and can you just that, that is, if that's a state statute and you want to add it to the plat, why say it's only for five and seven?
Well, because we're only in control of five and seven. The other, the other lots are all under individual ownership.
But if you're reiterating a state mandate, then you're not changing the rules or anything for anybody else. You're, you've indicated that you just want to reassert this.
Yes, and we want to make sure that they know that it applies to the lots in question, which is all we're really here to discuss.
I guess I would, I would say that, I would think then that you could put it on there without saying that. I guess it, it creates this sort of like, why is this situation only five and, a rule that only applies to five and seven? It's not a rule that only applies to five and seven. You're trying to get five and seven to pay attention to it, but by putting it on the plat, they should be paying attention to it. And if it isn't a change of the rules that you're just reasserting a state law.
Well, we did, we did, we did. It is actually slightly more restrictive, because the state statute actually only governs residential properties. So we left out the word residential, so that it could apply to undeveloped lots as well, so that it, we, so that under these two undeveloped lots, which are the only ones we can speak for, placing a new condition upon others would all be under the state, is actually slightly more restricted, because it would cover undeveloped lots without down to residential. So we've actually heightened its level of protection and participation for two undeveloped lots, which we feel is additional benefit. Again, we're doing this to provide insurance acknowledgement for the entire subdivision, to understand that in this division, we're not minimizing maintenance obligations, but really doing the best we can to codify them on the plan. But in addition, if you want, and if the board felt that we should state this state statute as well.
But you are, you are stating, you clarified by saying that, that it doesn't apply what you're saying to an undeveloped lot by state statute. And these are undeveloped lots. So by buying these lots, they participate in road maintenance, and it doesn't matter whether they develop it or not.
Right. So we were actually trying to, you know, provide a greater assurance that it wouldn't even have to wait until the properties were developed to participate in the court in this sharing. Yeah.
Ma'am, you care to speak?
I can see there's a lot of confusion, and it might be helpful to review a little bit of the history. The soul care subdivision plan was approved exactly six years ago today. When it was approved, you'll see on the plan still in the statement, voters shall apply for number seven in Woods Road Association. That was in April twenty seventeen. In September, the deed from Dave Urban to the applicant required that the applicant and his subdivision be members of Woods Road Association, abide by its bylaws and regulations, pay their share, pay their share of the cost of maintenance.
I'm sorry. Could you get a little closer? Because I'm not gonna be able to hear with that virtual, and I apologize for. Yeah, I'm just standing.
So one month later, Woods Road Association had its annual meeting in October, added these new soul care subdivision lots to the list of members and agreed to maintain all of Aspen Way once it had been constructed and once it met the standard the association has for maintenance. In March twenty eighteen, all the documents were proceeding in order. The applicant recorded his sole care declaration of protective covenants, his due covenants, which has a road maintenance section. And that road maintenance section specifies that all lot owners shall be members of Woods Road Association LLC, shall abide by its bylaws, regulations, and pay their share of the cost of maintenance of roadways as governed by the association, including but not limited to Aspen Way. Then the association began maintaining Aspen Way in twenty nineteen after the road was deep, was constructed and met our standard. And everybody might have lived happily ever after, except that in twenty twenty-one, the applicant started to treat the conception of Aspen Way, which runs over his property, as a private driveway, blocking access and harassing members who walked on it or who used the cul-de-sac as a turnaround for their maintenance vehicles and the construction vehicles. At that time, the association sought legal counsel. Legal counsel and part of the association, the association had no right of way over Aspen Way, and therefore could not continually maintain it. Further, we were told that a grant of a right of way must come from all the owners of the underlying lots, underlying parts of the road, which at that point had gone to ten different parties. We had to sign such an agreement for the association to have a right of way to be able to go back to maintaining the road as they had done for three years. As a parenthetical, if this right of way had been granted right after the subdivision was approved, only three signatories would have been needed, and they were all redevelopment. So now we're at an impasse. We're waiting for a right of way in favor of Woods Road Association from the ten different parties. And I've been told that all of them are going to sign such an agreement, such a right of way, except for the applicant. Now, you might say to yourself, why can't Woods Road Association just, Association just maintain the other parts of the road and you know, the applicants down on this, this hill with the road in the favor and sweep them out of there? Well, that would work, except for two things. The applicant owns the cul-de-sac, which is necessary for maintenance vehicles to come around. And there's another member, lot six, on that cul-de-sac. So as I said, we're in a pickle. If this amendment is approved before this right of way situation is cleared up and the applicant has a right of further dividing property, this is going to make it even more difficult and complex to get this right of way since getting another party to bring into this, get up to speed and get a signature from. He also does not keep his promise to be able to sell to a lot owner that contains any due covenants that needs road assistance to, if he will maintain Aspen Way. He holds hostage all the non-soul care subdivision lot owners, of which there are four, who need access to that cul-de-sac for maintenance vehicles and who, as members of Woods Road Association, expect the association to maintain their roads. He's just clarified that this addition does not mean that lots five and seven have to take care of the whole road. So some of what I imagine is, is not employed. But I believe that access to the Aspen Way cul-de-sac and maintenance of Aspen Way are important not only to Aspen Way lot owners and Woods Road Association, but also to the town in the standpoint of emergency vehicles and public safety.
Thank you. Yes.
I realize this is a very, very, but I'm thankful for.
In your name?
I'm Peter Mara. Thank you for the chance that you're giving people to, to just speak. And I understand it will be very important, so thank you. I am owner of a lot on Aspen Way, eighteen Aspen Way, which was a lot three on the plan. And I purchased that lot nineteen twelve, two thousand eighteen and with that, with that purchase, it was specifically stated that this lot within Aspen Way would be under this road association. Looking at the deed that went from, that was sold to, to Mr. Morehouse, there's a stipulation there that everybody belonged to Woods Road in a by, by their bylaws implicating that, that the road association was a part of this development. Again, as for, this became complicated, but everyone, you know, assumed that, that it was, this was according to the bylaws in terms of common rights of way for, for use with pushback from Mr. Morehouse, that this was a private drive and not, not a, a, a road in this. The development was approved by the planning board with this road with a right of way for at least the sole care members. So this isn't a private, a private, a private way in that respect. There's clear, we've been a meeting, we have a meeting last August, which, which addressed this with the Woods Road Association, was to address whether to remove Aspen Ways, part of the, the roads covered under the association, and that failed. And, and Mr. Morehouse was one of those people who voted to keep Aspen Way in the Woods Road Association bylaws as a road under it. But again, in order for them to, to do maintenance to that road, they have to have the easement in the right way, which we developed and is nearly ready to, to be distributed and approved by the Woods Road Association and its members as well as the Aspen Way. So, so this is a complication which has complicated the community, complicated the road. I think it, it is also not meeting the wording of the deeds, which was, which are, which was even to, which Mr. Morehouse has, we first obtained property as well as my deed, which indicates that I need to be a member of the Woods Road in the covenants that says this will be part of the agreement. So I think that the, 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 I asked the planning board to take these things into consideration before moving these, these amendments forward, because these are issues which affects the community, affects the road, affects the safety of the, of this area. And main your statutes allow you to take those things into consideration before final approval of looking in any new amendments.
Thank you.
Well, I would clarify a couple of important things. It's been mentioned here that they've referred to road maintenance easement to be granted to condone road maintenance. We thought in good faith that that was the agreement we were, we had entered into in twenty nineteen and had been in effect for a number of years. But then the WRA initiated a series of bylaws changes and involuntarily terminated our road agreement that had been in place. And we've repeatedly offered to formalize, it was never a written agreement. We've offered to formalize a road maintenance agreement. However, the easement they're actually requesting is not just for road maintenance. It's for any and all purposes. For example, including recreational rights. So that's an important distinction that wasn't really revealed in the discussion. It's not a road maintenance easement they're insisting upon. It's an easement for any and all purposes. We have offered a road maintenance easement and always thought that was what we were entering into. So that's a distinction. Again, we were terminated involuntarily without vote. And really now, the further, the further negotiation of that is really a civil matter. It remains under investigation. It doesn't fall under the purview of this application. So I guess that's the level of clarity we're going to provide.
One last, one last statement, please. All, all, all lot owners on Aspen Way are required to be members of the WRA. This was in place when Mr. Morehouse purchased the land and developed the land strictly in the bylaws. At that time, he purchased it. It states that rights of way for all purposes will be granted to all the members of the association. So there's a bit of a rewriting of the history here, because this is the, if he didn't know those agreements when he made them, he didn't read the bylaws, and he agreed to the bylaws when he purchased the land. So again, this is, those bylaws and those agreements were, were set in stone when he purchased the land and, and this changing of the history or is, is, is is, is not, not appropriate.
It isn't our, it isn't our, our place to necessarily get into civil lawsuits, but we are required to make sure that their right of ways, that there's cul-de-sac, cul-de-sacs accessible to. So I guess I do see the potential for this being prob, you know, we'll have to go through the full review and you have to have all that access. So I feel like it does, does sound to me like it. But can, and I guess I don't know that it, I don't want to get into all of the argument, but what I deduce from what you all have discussed is the issue is that you're having is that, that, that you feel there's a new right use being imposed on it for recreational use is what you refer to. You don't want people to just be able, kids to ride their bikes on the coals down to your cul-de-sac. Is that really?
What we, is not the agreement we had negotiated and entered into. There was never a request for easements. The description of the previous deeds is seems slightly inaccurate. We are all members of the WRA still. They simply terminated Aspen Ways road maintenance. All of the deeds of the sole care subdivision lots have been granted. Full use of the subdivision roads for ingress and egress is necessary. So any thoughts of, or, you know, necessary use of the cul-de-sac by the subdivision members has, is already in the deeds. So they, there's no question of if necessary, their use of the roads. What we, what we did not negotiate was full property rights for any and all purposes for all of the twenty-eight, I believe it's twenty-eight at this time approximately, members of the association.
And what is that, that you?
Which is actually an LLC. It's not a statutory road association.
But I guess when you say that, you've got people up the road from you. What is it that you're worried that people are going to, they have use of the right of way for all purposes? And the only thing that I hear is that you, you don't want people coming and walking down the road, or you don't want.
I mentioned, so it's for any and all purposes that you could imagine. Of course, there's a utility easement that's in place, of course. And we, and again, we have offered multiple times a road maintenance agreement and easement. However, they're attaching use for all purposes to that, you know, agreement. That use for all purposes was in place when he purchased the land. So this is nothing new. If he doesn't realize that, that's how he purchased the land and how he developed the land and what the conditions were and the deed that he was granted, then that is, you know, his, his error. But that's the, that's the, he went into when he bought the land from Mr. Urban and when he applied and granted, was granted membership into the WRA, because the bylaws specifically say, and the deeds specifically say you buy by the bylaws. The bylaw says the right of way for all purposes of way. Again, I can't, don't understand why. It's confusing to him. He was the one who developed the land. He's the one who applied for WRA membership. He had access to the bylaws. He knew what the bylaws were when, when he sold the lands to everybody. And then this is, and this is just backtracking into, into agreements that he had made when he first developed the land. So I think the board has a right to look at that, to see how he has deviated from those agreements and, and has created a, a, a unhealthy and unstable community with regards to the, how the development was, was evolved.
I don't think it's, I mean, cancer. I don't think it's, I mean, can't sort, sort this out for you. This is beyond our preview, but I, I don't feel like there's that big of an issue, like you're mad, you're clearly mad at each other. I hope some mediation can clear this up fairly.
I don't accept that assumption at all.
Okay. Okay, good. Whatever, it just, I'm not hearing anything that's, that's huge. And I do think that having the right of way cleared up is part of a subdivision. I hope that you guys can clear it up and move on, because this isn't a big deal to split a lot.
I'd just like to add one last thought. I think that we'll soon get our easement ready to be signed. I think you will see that everyone on Aspen Way will sign it gladly to allow our friends and neighbors from Woods Road to come and walk on a road and for their children to play on the road. And we're all very happy with that. Woods Road is very happy with us accessing their property. The only one who is opposed to this is Matt Morehouse. And he is selling his property. Thank you.
I, I think this, I'm sure that people in the room know a little bit more about this than I do, but I'm pretty sure there is a statute or laws that address the use of roads shown on the subdivision plan as far as what the people on, within the subdivision can do in that road. So I'm assuming that you've, you've done that, because that doesn't have to be an agreement unless there's something contrary to that, to what the, what the statute says. Then unless there's something contrary to it on the plan, which you can do, you can state on the plan that certain lots don't have the use of it. But I, I'm sure somebody must have dug into that. And, but how does that fit into what's going on? Because it seems to me there's some laws that cover this.
I can speak to that.
Sure, just wanted to come up and make one more statement.
I was just going to reply to Mr. Ashmore. The particular law he's quoting, I don't know how to quote things, but I have a copy. It's under Title twenty three Transportation, Part Three Local Highway, Chapter three or four, Acquisition of Property for Highway Purposes, Section thirty thirty one, Sub two. It says, a person acquiring title to land showing what a subdivision plan recorded in the Registry of Deeds acquires a private right of way over the ways laid out on the plan. So I believe this means that all the people who own lots in the Solitaire subdivision acquire a right of way over that way. Unfortunately, the maintenance is being provided by, or was to have been provided by Woods Road Association. And Woods Road Association is much bigger than just one Solitaire subdivision. It has parts of four different subdivisions, plus some lots who aren't in any subdivision at all. And our only common feature is that we access our lots via Woods Road and that we all have deed covenants requiring that we be members of Woods Road Association.
Thank you. So with this bit of intention before I say, what is our, are we to make a determination as to whether or not we think the plan is complete or no?
It's just an informal discussion right now. So now the next process is the completeness review. And that's when you look at the applications submitted and submissions against your ordinance. And that's when you go over, as you know,
all the different.
All the different sections of the ordinance. Yes.
The completeness, don't you, the board does the checking, essentially running down that.
Well, it's just, all sections are four two, yeah. It's a section on the completeness, formal application procedure on the ordinance.
What are the sections again?
To one, which is information on applicant, four two two, information on parcel to be subdivided, four point, two point three, information on subdivision. Then you have to go to sections five, excuse me, of the subdivisional limits, which is relative to general requirements, which is buffer scripts, performance with other law regulations, construction prohibited, ditches, catch bases, easements dedicated year round housing reserve, lots and densities, sewage disposal, land not suitable for development, open space provisions, wells, performance bonds, speed and design construction standards, cluster subdivisions, and any waivers that the board might require, I mean, sorry, the applicant might request. And then you go through section six of the land use zone ordinance. And then after that, it's public hearing. To find them complete.
It'll be nice and easy if you can clear this up before we go and do that. So how do we wrap this up and move on?
You don't have to bow the sketch plan.
No, no, yeah, so.
Would you say we've seen it?
Yeah, you just wait until, yeah, well, you've already got your completeness, they've already submitted, submitted the sections for formal application review. So we place them on an agenda and then butters get notified that an applicant, that the application has been submitted, excuse me. And then you go through, we schedule a completeness review, you go through all those sections I just mentioned, and if you find them complete, then we schedule a public hearing.
Is that clear to you guys?
Yes.
Well, what's the timeline for that, Kim? Well, they've already submitted a complete, a full application, so we're going to place them on the next agenda, which is April twenty sixth for completeness. And then if they're filed complete at the April twenty sixth planning board meeting, then we'll schedule them for a public hearing, but it won't be until probably the end of May, because we have to do certain publication notification in the newspaper and on fire butters.
How full is the twenty sixth?
They're already placed on it, you've already got two completeness reviews.
And completeness review is pretty lengthy.
It is, you've got a lot to look at.
There might be the potential of it being continued.
That's clearly up to you guys. Okay. I think what else is on the agenda? I don't know, I'm talking ahead.
Neighborhood roads.
Yep, that's on there. And D three sixty five completeness is on there. This one's on there. I think of another one. I thought there's something else, but I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you. Submission, it was last week, so we've already done the agenda for that. That's awesome, is that one? Yep, public hearing, thank you Heidi.
And just because we've got Bill not being able to participate and the board has gotten a bit skin slim, I am not going to be here for the last meeting of May. So, and you had said that that might be the one that would be the final meeting.
It could be, depends if you find them complete, if not, June. But obviously you've got to commit completeness reviews.
Just a heads up of like counting heads and everything, because we've only got three of us.
Well, you're going to let us know, because we got to arrange all this. But also we've got another board member, Gloria, who can come in and listen.
That's why I'm telling you right now.
So we need to make sure she's on board if you're going to be away.
I am going to be away.
Because three members are a quorum, but there was abstaining.
Right, that's why I'm pointing out, because we've only got three of us right now. Yeah.
What day?
And I'm also going to be away.
The last week, the last fourth meeting of May.
I'm going to be out of, out of state until the twenty sixth, either the twenty fifth or the twenty sixth.
Of May?
Yes.
Yeah.
When do you leave?
I leave on the eleventh. The day after the tenth.
What's the date of twenty sixty seven? And then you married?
I'm gone from the eighteenth to the twenty seventh or twenty eighth. I think I've been. I don't think you're going to have.
I'm not going to probably have a forum, but we'll have to look at that, I guess. If I don't have a forum, there's nothing you do about it.
Exactly, it just might not be immediate.
The next available dates, but it is what it is. Can't do anything about it.
And this has never happened since I've been on the board for almost ten years, but I, I made my arrangements because I had to. So I don't have any choice.
It is what it is. Bill?
I was going to say, perhaps the chair can remind the public that there are two.
And the N H Takers who would like to have another member.
Okay, we'll work around whatever we have to work around. Until letting me know if this meeting helps.
Yeah, just projecting forward, but maybe it'll get kicked down a meeting and then it doesn't, you know, we'll have to extend it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi.
Any other?
You know, I don't see that we have any other needed matters.
Any, yeah, other, anything else board members want to bring up to discuss? Nothing on the agenda and adjourned.
So number six is, I move to adjourn.
That concludes our meeting for this evening.
We need to approve that.
Oh.
Meredith Randolph, I.
Yes.
Dave Ashmore, I.
Okay, there, now we go, here we go.
Oh, you got to vote too?
Oh, I get to vote too.